Yes, yes.
Alright, thirty second warning, okay? Alright, I'm gonna bring the city council meeting for May twenty, two thousand nineteen to order. Rule call, please.
Council Ramon.
Here.
Council Lauren.
Here.
Mary Lutz.
Here.
Council Snyder.
President.
Council Crawford.
Here.
Vice Chair Baker.
Here.
And Council Westovers, my excuse, absence.
Okay, please allegiance, please.
With allegiance to the United States of America and to the brother of which is standing as one nation under God and individual with a routine justice for all.
Just want to let everyone know that we did hold an executive session before our city council meeting. It was a routine session and we do that every six months to evaluate our city manager's performance. There's no presentations this evening. We do have some people sign up for public comments, but it's not a particular issue, but John Galbraith and Todd Powell, he also signed up, but you're not looking to speak regarding anything except for the, the appeal, right? Okay, great, thank you. Well, here's the consent agenda, there's two items on the consent agenda, it's reports of information on possible action. It's an approval of temporary liquor license for Jeff Lindau, and then our meeting minutes from May sixth, two thousand nineteen. Anybody wanna pull anything from the consent agenda? Okay, Carrie Nunn, I'll entertain a proposal to approve the consent agenda.
I propose approving consent agenda.
Second.
Any more discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's approved unanimously. Under new business, we have the Phoenix Pioneer Cemetery, Cemetery request for funds. Last year, we budgeted four thousand dollars to assist the cemetery with their maintenance. Cutting a dead tree or fallen tree, could be for cutting grass, picking up leaves, and also replacement of equipment that was stolen from their utility shed. The last, or second to last budget meeting, we talked about two ways of allocating funds. One was just a lump sum, say here's your four thousand dollars, come back to us at the end of the year, just report on what you spent money on. Second option was to kinda piecemeal it out, where they have a vendor come out, and they cut the grass, they come back to us with a invoice that says, here's the invoice for the grass cutting for the beginning of the season. Another one for the next, um, cutting, next cutting, next cutting. Typically, there's four cuttings, for, um, one at the beginning of the season, and then in the springtime, and also for Labor Day, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, and there's one other in there, I forget which one. There's four different cuttings per year, and leaf pickup's a huge event for them. And the reason it came back to council is because there was some dispute as to how we should allocate funds for the cemetery. So I'm gonna open up to council discussion, and anybody have any comments about how to allocate funds for the cemetery? By the way, there's a letter from Stan Bartel, who's head of the cemetery board, in your packet. And also, let me hand out one more thing, and I've got one here for Kimberlin. This letter also came from the Phoenix Cemetery earlier today. I'm just gonna take the liberty to read it real quick. It says, uh, that the Phoenix Pioneer Cemetery, ongoing maintenance needs. It says, "Over the years, cemetery board members and volunteers have joined together to keep the cemetery in a maintaining clean park-like setting. The last couple of years, we have had fewer volunteers. The central location of the cemetery is an important part of the city, and the presentation of the cemetery's condition reflects on the city. Cemetery Board is asking the city's assistance in order to maintain the condition of the cemetery. The focus of cemetery cleanup is for these holidays, Memorial Weekend, Fourth of July, Labor Day weekend, and Veterans Day, and the end of fall leaf pickup. These holidays bring many members of the community, family, uh, family members, and other visitors to the cemetery. After the rainy season and mid-spring, we start the cleanup moving, mowing, weed eating, spraying weeds inside plots, and any tree trimming needed, and cleaning off the grave sites with the leaf blower. This is also done during the year, before each holiday listed above, so the cemetery is maintained in a park-like setting, um, so the community hasn't, that the community has enjoyed, enjoyed all these past years. The main leaf pickup is done in late fall, before the rainy season starts again, all leaves are picked up and removed from the cemetery. The past couple of years, Rogue Valley Disposal Service has donated dumpsters for the leaves to be hauled away. It usually takes two dumpsters, and they're really huge dumpsters, to, to clear away all the leaves. The cemetery has used Jackson County Community Justice in the past for mowing, weed eating. Uh, after their service, we still do some clean work, uh, to finish areas that they have not done completely." Last paragraph, "In addition, there are additional expenses during the year for equipment replacement, parts for equipment repair, fuel, payment to hired workers for mowing and weed eating, remove the trees that are at risk before they fall, remove the fallen trees damaged by storms. The city has been great working with us on the downed trees. Thank you for your consideration." Board President of the Cemetery. I'll open up to conversation, discussion.
If, if they do not use their four thousand dollars allotted to them, does that sit back in a budget for them for the next year? And do they have a budget made out with that, with that four thousand each year?
Well, that's up to how we wanna do it. Typically, like, for example, the, the Chamber, they come to us for two thousand dollars or three thousand dollars, we just give them the check. Uh, there's one year when the Chamber came to us piecemealing, got money, um, for different things they needed, and if they didn't use it, the next year they start out with the same budget amount. So, to answer your question, I'm not sure how the council wants to proceed, but that's how it's happened in the past.
Do they use all the four thousand dollars last year?
Uh, they haven't even touched the four thousand dollars, and we reason to tie them to the agenda because the decision that they requested funds, or before they requested funds, we wanted to see how the council wanted to proceed. So they haven't taken any of the money.
Didn't we give them money last year?
No, it was allocated in the budget, but not distributed, because there was some dispute as to how it should be distributed. Yeah. On Saturday morning, I was over at the cemetery, saw Stan working over there. There was one guy doing the weed whacker, he was eighty-three years old, and stands out there, he's seventy-four, and, you know, he had really bad arthritis, bad back, new knee. These guys are out there doing the work, and I, I...
Yeah, I think, they're an amazing group of people, the, uh, the Historic Society, they go, I see them all the time, right across the street from my house. And I see a lot of volunteers out in the cemetery, and I also see a lot of tourists out in the cemetery, not like driving down from anywhere, but anybody that comes to my house for more than once or twice, they'll walk over and check it out. It's an interesting, you know, it's, it's an attraction. I guess the question I would have, since we already have the money allocated, is what is easiest, the least time-consuming for staff? What's best for staff? What do they think? These are responsible people that are taking the money. It's not like if you give them a lump sum, they're all gonna jump on the bus and head to Reno, you know? Well, you know, we can trust them, but what's the best for staff? What do they think? How you guys feel?
Well, I, I would answer that, that it's easiest for us to just issue a lump sum. However, um, there is the, um, uh, perception, I guess, of whether or not the money is being spent wisely. If, if the council wants to provide those funds to a board or a committee or, or, uh, something like that, that, that's fine. It's, it's really a political question for you. Um, do you want receipts for the money that's being spent? Or do you, like you say, trust that they're not gonna take that money and go to Reno, and they're gonna, gonna spend it, you know, the way you would expect?
I think accountability would be helpful, transparency.
And that's really the question, is whether or not, see, when, when, when the request came, we, we went back and looked to see what the decision-making process was, and it just wasn't clear. It said that the council would reconsider it later, and so that's really what we're asking, is do you want staff to request receipts and make payments based on those receipts? Or do you want us to issue a three thousand dollar check? Because that's what the request is for, is three thousand.
I'd like to just add to what you just said, I think there's more to it than just issuing a three thousand dollar check or four thousand that we budgeted for. I think at the end of the year, they should come back to us, say, hey, we spent eight hundred dollars on the first grass cutting, and then, you know, less work after, you know, after that was, say, seven hundred dollars per cutting or six hundred. We spent money on replacement of tools, and just give us an itemized list, like a budget, showing what they did previously. That's what the Chamber typically does, and what, what they've done in the past, they come back to us and, and here, said, this is what we spent money on. Uh, Dorothy Cotton, the budget meeting, gave us a rundown of what the Historic Society spent money on, line by line by line by line, and they can definitely do that. So, for the lump sum, that's what I would prefer also, and I think it's better, but I wanna have it followed up with each year, showing what they're gonna use the money for. I kinda know what they're gonna use the money for, but you could just see it from the public also.
I think, like, accountability, so like what you're saying, is at the end of the year, we could look back on what they spent on the year before, and if they're not being wise stewards of the money, then we can adjust either how they go about spending it the coming year, or how much we give them.
Yeah. And I personally have no doubt that they're gonna spend it wisely, and it's sort of, I think it, I get a little bit angry that Stan's still out there cleaning, and at the eight, three-year-old guy is out there with, with the weed whacker. It kinda disturbs me that, here we have a pot of money sitting here, and they can use it to pay the people to do a great job mowing the lawn or picking up the leaves. I really think it's a benefit to the city and benefit to the cemetery to do so.
Well, I make a motion that we allocate their money, followed up by a, an accounting of what they did at year's end, to grant the money to the Phoenix Pioneer Cemetery.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion?
Just throw out a couple ideas. I think the lump sum, half of these resistance is probably the best for the staff. It's a one action, there's not a lot of menial stuff. But we also need to know at the council how much is left over at the end of the year, if anything, so that affects next year. If they have a thousand dollars left over, we don't need to give them a thousand dollars of whatever we might do the next year. So accountability is absolutely critical. Whether or not it's done quarterly to show us the trend, or is it at the end of the year, I think is the question, yeah, so.
And I think it's really helpful at the budget time, like during the budget meeting, we get in the county with the Historic Society, uh, did, or does on a yearly basis, like the Chamber typically does, and we knew this year because we didn't allocate any money. But budget time is good to come back with that amount, and we adjust in budget.
Yeah, the one thing that would trouble me about trying to accept invoices from people they've arranged for, is now we're stuck with whatever that invoice is, and if it ends up being more than we've allocated, because they're just spending it at a higher rate, we're on the hook for something we have not approved. That's why I kinda like the lump sum, that management's forced on them to do it right, but accountability does.
And some time ago, I forget which organization, but our, our finance director said she prefers that it be done in a lump sum, instead of doing piecemeal checks for this and that, you know, cut down a tree, pay a vendor, and she has to write multiple checks versus one lump sum. Any more discussion? Okay, rule call, please. Uh, we did have a second, so Warren, look at the second.
Council Ramon.
Yes.
Council Warren.
Yes.
Council Snyder.
Yes.
Council Crawford.
Yes.
Council Baker.
Yes.
Okay. Next up on the agenda is an appeal of conditional use permit, nineteen dash zero one, exit twenty-four, storage, outdoor, it says TV storage, or they meant RV storage, alright? So, as far as process goes, we're gonna have Evan come up and speak to the process that we're going to, to do, and then we'll start with the appellate, or the, yeah, the appellant giving his testimony, and we'll have a discussion.
Okay, first of all, there was some material that the applicant submitted after the packet was completed. It was emailed to everybody. Um, I have printed copies, if anybody would like them, if you don't have one.
Are you speaking of this?
This was the letter from Davis, Hearn, Anderson, and Turner.
I printed it out.
So, does anybody...
I'll take one, I read it, but I'll take one. Thank you.
I'll take one. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, first things first, Evan McKenzie, Planning Director, um, because we, in the planning department, are a little bit more used to some of the procedural aspects of a land use action. I offered to read our opening statement into the record, um, instead of our chair doing that, which would normally be the case. Um, I'm just used to doing this, so...
You offered, I accepted.
So, this is, um, this is a quasi-judicial hearing. Um, that means that, uh, no member of the body is supposed to accept any testimony from any person outside of the hearing. And so that means that before we start the hearing, we will ask all counselors to, uh, declare if they have any bias, ex parte contact, or conflict of interest. Um, for anybody who does not know what those are, do we need a refresher?
Why don't you go ahead and do so? Give it to the audience.
So, an ex parte contact is simply any contact with the public outside of the hearing. It could, it could be as simple as going by to see the site, it could be accepting testimony from a person who has an interest in it for or against. If you've been by the site and know it, it's not a bad idea to simply disclose that, yes, I've been by the site many times, and that, that's plenty. So, that is ex parte contact. Bias is basically when nothing anybody says will change your mind. That's pretty straightforward. Conflict of interest is if you or a member of your family, um, could potentially gain or lose monetarily as a result of the decision. If there is no monetary gain, there is technically no conflict of interest. However, if there is a perception, oftentimes, it's just simply a good idea to disclose it, um, to give anybody in the audience an opportunity to request that you step down. I don't think that's going to happen tonight, but you never know. So, um, always better to disclose than get appealed later, because we didn't. So, this is the nice, fun, long statement that we get to read to everybody. First of all, um, directions for the hearing itself. Testimony will be accepted in the following order. Uh, staff report first, then testimony by the applicant, which in this case will be the person making the appeal. Testimony in favor, followed by testimony in opposition. Um, the chair has the ability to limit testimony to a time limit. We suggest three minutes, if you, I don't think we have a big crowd, if you want to go longer, that would be at your discretion. All testimony is then followed by rebuttal by the applicant. The chair may open the hearing to additional testimony, followed by final applicant rebuttal, um, at which point the hearing is closed to public comment. No public, no additional testimony will be accepted at all. And then deliberation and a decision. When recognized by the chair, please come forward to the podium, give your name, address, and make your statement. All testimony, arguments, and evidence presented regarding this request must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulation which the person believes to apply to the decision. Please address only the applicable criteria for the decision. Please do not repeat testimony. If you wish, you may choose to merely agree with a previous speaker's statements. The chair may limit testimony to a certain time limit, generally no more than five minutes. When recognized by the chair, counselors may ask questions of staff and participants without affecting time limits. Please do not speak unless recognized by the chair. Please do not make comments, noises, or gestures that may distract the person speaking, members of council, or the audience. Once the hearing has been closed and the council begins deliberation, no further public testimony will be accepted. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals shall be raised not later than the close of the record at or following the final evidentiary hearing. Such issues shall be raised and accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the commission, sorry, it always says the commission, if I say commission, I mean council in this case. Evidence sufficient to support the council and parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to Luba based on that issue. Failure of persons to participate in the public hearing, either orally or in writing, precludes that person's right of appeal to the city council or Luba. Written testimony submitted prior to the hearing constitutes participation in the hearing. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the decision-maker to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. There's a little bit more here that I will not read unless the council elects to continue the meeting, so this would be related to a continuance. Um, or for leaving the record open, and I don't see a lot of the public here, so I suspect we will not need that. So, with that done, do any of you have any questions on the, just the procedural aspects?
Typically, the applicant is given twenty minutes.
Correct.
Okay.
So, um, now, this is an appeal of a planning commission decision, and so it, I, I do not see my position as staff to question the decision of the planning commission. However, the city council may. This request, um, came, well, the request came because the development code requires approval of a conditional use for any outdoor storage, any outdoor commercial storage. So, we don't, we, when I say we, I mean, the code does not care what you are storing. If you are accepting compensation for storing other people's things, and it is not in a fully enclosed building, it requires a conditional use approval. So that's issue one. And issue, and, and one of the issues associated with the appeal. The original application proposed, um, carports for covered storage for recreational vehicles, boats, whatever ends up being there. Um, it's my understanding that the applicant, um, has withdrawn that portion of the application and proposes to do simply open storage. This does not change the requirement for a conditional use, but it does take the articulation question for architecture out of the application. So unless the applicant proposes again to put up a structure, we do not need to discuss architecture, but the conditional use requirement is still there. The other issue, um, that I think will be the primary issue with, um, the planning commission's findings, as well as, as your findings and decision, is landscaping. The code requires twenty percent of all sites to be landscaped, um, in simplest terms. The applicant had proposed to count some of the landscaping on their existing facility on the other side of Furry Road toward the landscaping requirement for this application. Now, the code does have an allowance to do that with parking, but only with parking, where we will allow off-site parking to count toward your off-street parking requirement. And because of that, I suggested to the applicant that if the planning commission were to allow it, we could do the same thing with landscaping. The commission elected not to make that exception. You, as the council, does have the authority to do that, but you will need to make findings to justify that. And so, as staff, I'm not here to recommend that you approve or deny, or in this case, affirm the decision of the planning commission to deny or reverse the decision of the planning commission and approve. You will need to make a finding specifically addressing the landscaping. Um, and if there are any questions regarding that, I am more than happy to answer those, um, after I'm done and all the testimony is given. Those are your two big issues. One issue mentioned by the applicant in some of their submittals after the planning commission hearing was a two thousand and four approval for a similar facility on the same site. Most of you are aware that we don't have very good records going back that far. I was unable to locate anything in our paper files or the electronic files, and so I know nothing about that application beyond the fact that it exists, or existed. I don't know if there was an expiration date to that application, and if there was, when it was. What I can say is that if there is no application, if there is no deadline for that particular approval, and we are to follow it, we must follow it to the letter. Because to do anything different would be a modification to that application. I do not see that application as related to this one. Or the applicant or his attorney may have something to say about that, and if you have questions, I'll certainly do my best to address them after they are done. I think I will stop unless there's any questions.
And the applicant has twenty minutes, does that twenty minutes also include testimony by his advisors?
That should be the entire presentation. Um, again, we don't have a big crowd tonight, and I would leave it up to the discretion of the chair for how long you'd wanna let them go.
So presentation would typically encompass the applicant and his team?
Generally, yes.
Okay, got it. And then, one more question. In the letter that the applicant sent to us, he mentions the landscaping issue, but he also mentions screen open space RV and boat parking on gravel. I just, as I mentioned to you earlier, I didn't see how that pertained to our proceedings this evening.
I would leave that up to you to determine. Um, really, the, I think the, the biggest question is, um, on, on the first item is really just the, the fact that it's a conditional use, and so now we're not dealing with the architecture anymore, but it is still the conditional use, and that's where the council must determine basically if it is appropriate. The, the big issue really is the landscaping, and whether or not the council wishes to interpret the code in a way that would allow a developer to basically spread the requirement over multiple parcels that don't touch each other. Um, if this were a brand spanking new project, it was all consolidated, all of them touched, it was all one deal, um, those internal lot lines I would consider irrelevant. Uh, that's not really the case here, um, which doesn't mean you can't go there, but you'll need to come up with some reasonable reason to do so and have that in the record, if that's your wish.
Evan, on page three of the appeal, it talks about lighting as a consideration. Is that something we are looking at as well?
Let me get there.
On page three, from the findings from the planning commission. Landscape plans show a mix of trees and shrubs along the site perimeter. The application includes civic and landscape plan, but does not include a lighting plan. Approval may be conditioned upon submitting, submitting of a lighting plan.
So, the, the code requirement generally for outdoor storage would be that there be lighting and that it not project beyond the property boundary. Down-facing lights, current light technology makes it very easy to do that. And so, we did not have a full lighting plan. Staff is comfortable with conditioning approval on something like that, because there's no real discretion to apply to it, the light stays on the site or it doesn't. Conditions that allow staff discretion after the fact are appealable, because five different people might come up with five different answers, and you don't really, if you, if you can't definitively say yes or no, this is met, that's a really bad condition.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Evan. The first stop is, is starting to talk about ex parte contact, bias, and perceptions of bias. Just the perception of bias, I get a question for, for our attorney. If somebody is assisting one of us in a campaign, and working hand and glove with a political campaign, does that present a perception of bias? That's your perception? I mean, if that does...
I mean, if that does, I mean, as simple as saying, someone worked on my campaign, and just to let you know that that's, you know, that's something happened. Now, whether or not that's something that you would, it's better to disclose that that's a fact that occurred, and that you can still, if you can't proceed because you now, this bias now becomes, you know, you've already made a decision, and you can't base your, you know, you can't go forward because you know you're already kind of beholden or something to that effect, then that's the time that you would exclude yourself from the voting on the, you might be able to have a discussion.
But if somebody worked on your campaign, you feel you can still be unbiased, you can still make the process, your fine is stand forward.
Right. The thing is, is that once you disclose it, then persons can look at that, make that decision as to whether or not you are in fact being intellectually honest enough to say, you know, really, I mean, depending on how the decision comes out, or by the things that you say, they may come up with enough evidence to show that really you'd already made up your mind.
Okay, great, thank you. So, we're going to officially open the hearing, and we're going to go around the table one by one and just see if anyone has any perceived bias, or ex parte contacts, or like our planner said, even driving by a facility, which we've all done many times. Sure. But Terry, why don't you start off, and we'll go around the table, okay?
I don't have any bias. I just follow what's right for the city. That's all I care about. And if that's this, then that's this.
Thank you.
I have no bias.
No bias whatsoever, no ex parte, or no conflict of interest.
Okay. Same here, but I have driven by the facility, or proposed facility many times, just in my regular travels.
I have a perceived, or maybe perceived as a bias, both the contacts worked in my campaign, and her friends, and I've been to their facility, I've been by their facility, but I believe I can make honest decisions moving forward.
Unbiased decision, right?
Unbiased.
Great, thank you. That's great.
I have no bias or no conflict of interest.
Okay, great. So, we're going to start off with the applicant's twenty minutes. So, Mark and your team have twenty minutes to your thing. It's now seven oh-two. We'll go to seven twenty-two if need be, okay? They'll all state your names for the record also, okay? We'll start at twenty when you're ready, okay?
There you go. It's up.
Is it up? Oh, good. Okay, I'm just giving a different reading here. Okay. Hi, I'm Chris Hearn, 515 East Main Street in Ashland, and I'm glad to be here tonight to address you. I haven't been in your impressive facility before, and it's quite a treat. And I don't know how long you've been in here, but it's pretty nice. I'm privileged tonight to represent Mark Kellenbach, and Mark's the owner and operator of Exit 24 Storage, the new facility that's just been built in the last couple of years. I mentioned in the letter that I sent out that the approval for that was in 2017. However, it turns out I'm wrong, it was 2015. December of 2015, it was actually approved, finalized in January of 2016. So, I don't think that's a big deal, but I didn't want to be accused of misleading the council in that respect. I'd like to introduce the members of Mark's design team. And that'd be John Galberth, a well-known local landscape architect, and Todd Powell, who's a local engineer and did the engineering for both what we're calling Phase One, which is the existing recently constructed storage facility at 65 Grove Road. And then, across Furry is the vacant lot, it's 1.25 acres. That's 291 Grove Road, and that's the subject parcel that we're talking about tonight. Per the slide here, Phase One has been in operation for about a year now. And go ahead.
I'm going to introduce myself.
Okay, please do.
I saw Chris looking over here. So, I'm the appellant, Mark Kellenbach. My wife is here, and we're the owners, Kathleen, the owners of Storage Adex at 24, and I reside at 104 Meadowview here in Phoenix.
As I go through this, and I'll try to be brief, if the council has any questions or would like to hear from any of the experts that worked on the design, or Mr. Kellenbach, obviously, who owns and operates the facility, he knows a lot more than I do about the details. But I do understand that it's currently 85% occupied as of today, and that's just within a year. It currently has 474 storage units constructed, and that includes 86 RV and boat spaces in the southern portion of the parcel at 65 Grove Road, which is directly adjacent to the parcel we're talking about tonight.
So, to clarify, there's actually 550 spaces, including boat and RV. So, that would be in addition to.
Right. And the reason we're talking in terms of Phase One and Phase Two, although this is technically a standalone application, is that, as your planning director pointed out, back in 2004, the city approved this site, both parcels as combined application, which included a storage facility, basically along exactly the same lines as is being proposed now. Due to some complexities with the ownership, Mr. Kellenbach purchased the northern parcel at 65 Grove Road separately. He's now purchasing the southern parcel that we're talking about tonight. So, it was approved by the city in the configuration that we're talking about tonight, and with the landscaping combined, that we're suggesting that you might approve under this very unique set of circumstances. And part of the uniqueness is that fact that in 2004, the city looked at what was essentially the same application, except it included both sites as one, as one single project. With the landscaping balanced between the two parcels, as we are suggesting here, that separates it from a standalone application, I think, because of the, well, I'll go into that in more detail later, but it isn't your typical situation with an applicant coming in with a single parcel. These were combined as an approved application with the landscaping that's being proposed here, spread out across the two sites. On the screen, you'll see the Phase One property. The southern portion is open RV and boat parking. As you probably no doubt know, you know, that baby boomers are reaching age and majority, RVs are very popular. Both city code, municipal code ordinances and CCNRs and subdivisions don't allow people to park their RVs in their driveways or on the street. So, if you own an RV or a boat, chances are, unless you're lucky enough to own a large property with an RV storage area, you're going to end up seeking out the services of a facility like this, where you can store on a monthly basis. The important thing we'll get to, and the reason the planning commission had no issues with traffic, is that part and parcel of that is that most people store RVs and boats for long periods of time. They may not show up for a month or two. It's not like a minute mark, a truck stop, a gas station, where people are coming and going all day long. Many people only see their RV a couple of times a year. So, the traffic demand is not a key component of this application, unlike a number of the other conditional uses in the city's list. So, that's the aerial of the site, and I think Mr. Kellenbach's plan is to basically move that open storage down to the southern site, which is the subject of this application. He has plans to, that are approved, to construct more enclosed storage units up on that northern parcel that was approved in 2015. He's got the engineering and the works on that, financing. He did want me to point out in my letter, I made it sound like this was going to happen immediately upon approval of the open storage for RVs on the southern parcel, everything would move to the south, and he would begin construction of the enclosed units on the north. He tells me he doesn't want to mislead anybody about that. He, it's going to happen, but it's just a matter of the timetable, and he didn't want there to be any confusion that that, you know, a storage on the upper parcel and northern parcel is temporary, quote unquote. But basically, he has plans to build out the northern parcel as was approved in the 2015 plan. And the other thing I wanted to point out is that the, a lot of the city's code criteria talk about the character of the neighborhood. And as you can see from that aerial, you have Palm Harbor Homes directly to the west, you've got the Petro Truck Stop, you've got the open storage uses up there. If you keep going north, you've got Home Depot, you've got DSU Peterbilt up there. So, it's clearly, you know, in the character of the neighborhood for that little slice of the city. Okay, and this is the site work, this is the northern site at 65 on the Phase One, which has been partially built out at this point. You can see to the left of your screen are the buildings that can be built on that, what is now open storage on that northern parcel across Furry Road. And that's Phase One. Phase One, Stage One, is what you see today. That's 474 units plus 86 lighted RV and boat spaces on gravel. And this isn't just your loose gravel, it's striped gravel. It's permeable, though, so it doesn't create problems with lack of permeability. Stage Two will include 145 drive-up storage units, and that'll be on that southern portion of the site that's currently occupied by the open RV and boat storage. This is the 2004, a city-approved plan, and it included, as we said, both Phases One and Two. To the right of your screen is the 65 Grove Road storage area as it was approved in 2004, and it included across Furry Road, the parcel we're talking about tonight on the left of the screen, with configuration of open boat parking, RV parking, just as we are now requesting that the council approve. And we think that's important, because it shows that this was at one time, one single application that was approved by the city, and again, with the same landscaping configuration as is being proposed, with the majority of the landscaping for both parcels being met and exceeded quite substantially on the northern parcel, the Phase One parcel. And we'll get to that in a moment here. Okay, now, we're on the 1.2 acre, 5 acre site at 291, and that's the, across Furry Road from the existing facility. The proposal is 62 RV and boat spaces, uncovered parking, gravelled and fenced. As the planning director mentioned, when Mr. Kellenbach came before the planning commission, much of their problem with this proposal was how to deal with the issue of these carports. They were covers or roofing structures. They did not have walls, which is an element of architectural design in the code. So, they struggled with how to classify these roof structures or carport structures. There was concern mentioned by one or two planning commissioners about that they thought the roofs were ugly, that they lacked architectural relief, that they were large expansive, kind of ugly roof structures. Mr. Kellenbach said, well, you know, with these being prefabricated, roof structures supported by aluminum poles, very simple to just eradicate them, to eliminate them from the project and have it be open storage, so we can easily just get rid of all that architectural issue that seemed to give some consternation to the planning commission as it deliberated. Their only issue, by the way, besides that, was the landscaping, as the planning director mentioned. But this is what's proposed. And here is the landscaping plan done by Mr. Galberth, the landscape architect. That's not the color version, but you'll see that along Furry Road and Grove, it is designed to have a screening effect, to mitigate the visual aesthetics as people drive by on the road. So, all the landscaping is on those two public streets. And then, it's buffered by a tall building, it's, I believe, concrete block to the south, so that's screened, obviously, on that side. And it's just open RV storage. And this is one of the landscape architects' mockups of what the landscaping is proposed to look like when it's mature. You'll see that the city doesn't allow chain link or anything like that. This is rod iron fencing, decorative fencing, with sort of a laurel tree. John told me what they were. They're not English laurels, but they're a similar sort of rapidly growing expansive tree designed, when it becomes mature, to screen the visual impact of this from the two public streets, Furry Road and Grove. That's gravel with striped spaces. This is the existing open storage on the northern parcel, Phase One. Same fencing will be used, same sort of gravel and striping as you see in that rendering there, which is the existing storage deck at 24. Okay. This is the landscaping that was installed at the existing facility, and it, you know, hasn't matured yet. Of course, it was just installed relatively recently, but as you can see, it's a white planning strip, and when it's all filled in, will again have that visual and aesthetic mitigation of any unsightliness, if you don't like the look of nice RVs. For the price some of those cost, you know, I guess the beauty's in the eyes of the beholder. There were a couple of planning commissioners that openly expressed their dislike for the look of RVs. They felt they were ugly, quote unquote. And I'm not going to call it bias, but it sure seemed like it. I know other people like RVs, and so, that's, I think, a very kind of personal discretionary decision as far as what RVs look like. But in any event, there's been an effort made, and I think a really professional one, that this will all be screened from public view as much as possible and as reasonable in its circumstances.
So, can I go on?
Yes, please.
So, if you go back to the picture, the rendering, can you go back to that? So, looking here, you don't see large bushes. Keep going back. Yeah, I think one more. Yeah, so, we've added screening bushes, which are not on the current site, they weren't required, the landscape was approved without it. So, this will be considerably more screened, and if you wanted to ask John about what they are and why we decided to use them, you could, but needless to say, extra effort, and we've gone beyond the code to provide additional screening.
Are the bushes deciduous?
They will be when they grow out. Yeah, grow out, yeah.
They're ever, okay, thank you. The trees are...
Trees are deciduous, and the shrubs are...
Yeah, they're...
Okay, this is a, this is a view, then, of the vacant lot as it exists now from Grove Road. I think Mr. Bill, this building is the one on the left of the screen there. It's just a vacant grassy lot, and if you could, if the photo extended to the right, you would see across Free Lane, Phase One of the storage exit 24 area. And it's 1.5, 2.5 acres, I'm sorry, and this is looking west from Grove Road as it exists Phase Two is this parcel again, that's the subject of tonight. Typical streetscape view, and this is of Phase One, however, but it'll, you know, match it as far as the fencing and the shrubs, although they will be mature as they were in the artistic rendering. These have only been in a few months at this point, I understand. Again, Phase Two, 291 Grove Road. This is a photo of Phase One, as it exists now, the gravel with the striping on it, typical RV boat storage on striped gravel. It's pervious, screened, and it's LED lighted. And I think we have a slide on that, but that's easily handled. The lighting issue is easily handled, it's a condition of approval. It's really not discretionary. Mr. Kellenbach will have a, you know, a lighting consultant will design a plan. The engineering for that is quite expensive, so he wanted to know that he has approval before he pays the engineer to do a lighting plan. That'll be submitted then to planning staff, and will meet all standards and criteria the city have, has as far as lighting requirements for this sort of a RV boat storage area. And there's an example of the typical lighting, and this is again at the Phase One parcel that's been constructed. I'm sure it'll be pretty close to what is in the recently approved Phase One. I went over vehicle trips, but this is kind of replowing that ground. There's a kind of a tipping point of, if the proposal can be expected to generate 200 vehicle trips or more per day, there can be a requirement for traffic study. This will be far less than that, as I said, the other conditional use, in fact, all the other conditional uses... than that. As I said, the other conditional use, in fact, all the other conditional uses on the list that the city has, this is probably by far the least traffic generating. Again, people seldom go to boat storage areas except to pick up or drop off their RV or their boat. And that's usually seasonal in itself. Okay, the Planning Commission, again, had, they had two problems with this application, and only two, and those are the grounds for appeal, then. First of all, they, they felt, as I mentioned, the cover, the previously proposed covered parking, the carport structures failed to meet the architectural guidelines for continuous building walls. Again, they struggled with the fact that they actually didn't have walls. But eliminating those was really just the easiest road. It wasn't that big a deal to Mr. Kellenbach, and solved a lot of problems. So we don't have to deal with that at this point. And that, basically, this slide basically says the same thing. It's been eliminated. It's just uncovered parking and storage for boats and RVs. And so those root concerns about the roof structure are, of course, eliminated. Now, this is the remaining issue, and this is the twenty percent landscaping or open space goal that the city has. In two thousand and four, again, the city approved a site plan that combined Phase One, which is the existing storage facility, sixty-five Grove Road, and Phase Two in one application. As a technical matter, this is a new application. So unless you get to the definitions that we're going to talk about in a minute, it's easy for staff to address this as just a new application. You've got to meet twenty percent landscaping. You don't meet it, you don't, you're done. There are unusual circumstances here that we'll talk about, and I think that's really what comes down to where the rubber meets the road tonight, is whether the council, as the elected legislative body that has discretion to interpret its ordinance, can, under this just unique set of circumstances, see that that landscaping requirement is met in this case.
Just to clarify, the current proposal meets seventeen percent. It comes up to seventeen percent. So we're shy, but no, we're not significantly shy. So, but we are enough shy that, as you've probably read and you'll see, it does have a strong impact on the project.
Right, okay. Anyway, so I, as a prelude, as I mentioned, we're basically requesting the council to exercise its discretion under these unique circumstances, to basically look at this as the council, or I, I'm sure it didn't go to council, probably, but as the planning staff and any other decision-makers did in two thousand and four, looking at the two parcels as one, and allowing this open space or landscaping requirement to be spread across both, in light of the quite substantial excess provided on the parcel one to the north. Landscaping requirements, Phases One and Two. This is a bioswale that was built on, upon Phase One. And was this part of the Payne Creek by Loner, or is that the next line? Okay.
Just letting you guys know, you've got twenty minutes now, but I'm going to extend your time. I don't think we're in a big rush tonight, not a lot of public here, isn't it?
Okay.
Take a lot of time, so just, just...
Okay, we'll wrap it up.
Hustle through and lose more time.
A couple of points here. I did want to mention, this Payne Creek open space, this was a major wetlands mitigation project. There's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of wetlands mitigation here on Parcel One. It involved five government agencies. The best wetlands mitigation designer in the state probably worked on this. So it's pretty, it's not just landscaping open space, but it's very expensive, very elaborate landscaping open space that was provided on Parcel One in connection with that approval. That's another view of the Payne Creek open space, wetlands mitigation project. Okay, and then, these are just briefly the numbers involved here. One-point-two acres, it's fifty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-seven square feet. Twenty percent landscaping requirement would come in at ten thousand, eight hundred, eighty-nine square feet, which is large. City of Ashland would only require fifteen percent in this kind of commercial project. That's neither here nor there, but it is a, it is a pretty heavy requirement. It impacts smaller lots especially hard. As submitted, Phase Two provides seventy-three hundred and forty square feet landscaping. So it's short, three thousand, five hundred and forty-nine. That, that would lead to, Mr. Kellenbach, having a loss of nine-point-two-one spaces, which is a lot, when you consider that Phase One provided seven, almost eight thousand square feet excess landscaping, and that's over and above the twenty percent requirement. Okay, and then, lastly, council interpretation of the LDC, and that's what you, as an elected body, have. You have an ability to interpret your ordinance. It's not like a judicial interpretation that makes it a precedent for all time and other applications. It's using your discretion as elected officials to interpret your code under these particular facts and circumstances, as Mr. McGee will tell you. It doesn't mean the next person or applicant can come in and require you to do the same thing because you've set a precedent, not unless they had exactly these same facts. In this case, the two thousand and four approval included both the properties that are adjacent and are under the same ownership. If you look at the definitions, well, first of all, landscaping area standards for commercial districts, the actual language is that minimum twenty percent of the site is the word used, shall be landscaped. And then if you go to the definition section of your code, site includes a property or group of adjacent parcels or lots, subject to a permit application of this code. And the Ciprin versus City of Medford case, that was the Medford Walmart case, was really a landmark decision, the first time that Oregon Supreme Court weighed in on a land use case in a decade. And they basically weighed in to say that local governments, councils, and elected bodies are allowed a high degree of deference when they do this kind of interpretation of the code, of their own code. And so you're not just married to following the dictionary definition. You're entitled to use any kind of plausible interpretation that you feel is appropriate under the circumstances. These are, this is in your staff report. It's just the conditional use permit, general requirements, suitability of proposed site, shape, location, natural features, transportation, public facilities, proposed use won't alter the characters surrounding neighborhood. In this case, again, you have parking and, and issues like truck stops and Palm Harbor homes, et cetera. So it fits in with the neighborhood, satisfies general goals and policies, and council has discretion. And that, you know, other people's feelings on these discretionary ideas aren't really evidence. Everybody has an opinion on some of these things, but it's really your opinion that matters and takes priority under circumstances like this. And conclusion is, then, if council combines a twenty percent landscaping goal for Phase One and the adjacent Phase Two, which were once one projects, it is approved in two thousand and four, then there would still be over four thousand, four hundred and forty square feet over and above the twenty, so it exceeds the requirements. Landscape on a site, is that word is defined, it can include adjacent lots, in this case, under the same ownership. And again, you have that flexibility and interpretation power. And, and basically, it's just good land use planning to have not always a one-size-fits-all, but to allow flexibility when certain circumstances are presented to you, and it's just a matter of fairness at that point. And that's really all I have, unless you have questions, and I'm happy to address those as, as our team here.
I have a question, but I wanted to refer to council first, since you guys have any questions on things.
My question is, why are we even here? You already got your approval back in two thousand and four. Why even go to the Planning Commission for an approval? Why don't you just say, we're going to build like we wanted to build back in two thousand and four, the, we got the approval, and that's all we're going to do, and done.
I think the planning director mentioned that there's no file. We have the approval. I showed it to you. We've got the, but we don't have a file saying what was exactly when it expired. And your planning director doesn't know, and we don't know.
If this is a big project, you must have a file somewhere. You must have an approval from the city that says, hey, we have approval.
Well, we did seek approval on Phase One. Went through, of course, all the steps to obtain that. But the two developments are not identical. So the layout of the buildings of the first developer are not the same as what our layout is. So there are some differences. So I would assume the approval would have to be exactly the same in terms of the buildings. Anyway, we didn't have an issue. We went forward, went through the process. And if we had to do it over again, and if, as you suggest, that would get us to where we are, I guess we would, but we're where we're at right now.
So the changes are extensive enough that you want to, say, not go with that previous approval back in two thousand and four, you want a different set of criteria for approval?
That didn't go through our minds. It wasn't on the table. But I will say, two ninety-one, Phase Two, as it's cited here, is identical. So if you look at the two site plans, the layout is identical. So...
Site Two was already approved, and it's identical site plan.
Yeah, you could just approve us and send us on our way. That'd be great.
No, no, I, I'm, there must be, you must have some paperwork somewhere that says, it's a big project, it's a lot of money.
Well, the city would have the approval. So we're not the owner in two thousand and four. It's a different owner.
Different owner.
Yeah, so we don't have their approvals. Or did we even think to ask for it, honestly?
So different project, different approval, different owners.
Is it a different project or same project?
Same project.
Same project.
Different owners. I don't know the circumstances. Maybe the planning director was, why? The file's missing, gone. I, Mr. Kellenbach didn't own the property. I wasn't involved. I don't know. It's, it's a mystery. We do have a map, approved site plan. We don't have the file. And nobody seems to have the file, as far as we can tell.
Well, that was my question. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
If you're, you're seventeen percent right now. Right, so you've only got to go three percent more?
Occupancy of the facility, eighty-five percent.
No, landscaping.
Oh, no.
Twenty percent.
So what's proposed is, yeah, eighty-three percent of the twenty percent, yeah. So we're seventeen point something percent, yeah.
Right. So it's only three percent more?
Worth, yeah. But it's nine, it's nine spaces, so it's a significant loss.
Right, I get that. I was just, like, wondering, is that, that's what told this whole thing up? And it was all approved as one big project before, right?
Correct.
We just don't have anything on paper to... That would be nice. That would be nice.
No, I think it's simply precedence, and seeing that it was looked at as one. And then we've made a case that since they're adjacent, one site could be seen, given the definition, it's still one, could be treated as one. Had the circumstances been, we had acquired the site, which we attempted to do at that time, it would have come in as one. So it's within your discretion to see it, I guess, fairly equitably still as one, and apply the twenty percent across both.
But it went from being from one big project to two due to the new ownership.
They only sold one parcel to Mr. Kellenbach first, right? And then now they're selling him the second one.
I see.
But they came in with, or it wasn't even them, it was maybe their predecessor came in with the whole, owned both, and came in with it as both back in two thousand and four, got it approved. So back when he came before the city in two thousand and fifteen, he only owned the northern parcel. Now, now he's acquiring the southern one. So, correct?
And nobody has the information?
Crazy. Not unusual. So the question would be for us to determine if it's one unit or two?
Would you have questions for the applicant?
Well, I do not, I'm sorry.
Okay, we're going to deliberate in just a few minutes, but I got you. Anybody else?
Just kind of a random question. Does the new site have any sort of stormwater treatment facilities? It does?
I think that was a yes, just for the record.
Anybody else?
So it's twenty-three percent over the two lots. One business, two lots, right? The landscaping.
All right, thank you very much.
Could you back up the slide to one of the earlier ones where you showed Phase Two, but you showed the landscaping with all the diplomatic trees on it? I just want to pause on that one.
The architect's rendering?
Yep.
Yeah, artist's rendering. No, there was another one that...
There was a black and white one.
The bland one.
Oh, there it is. I think there's an underlying philosophy of why we have landscaping. And this one apparently is using streets and sidewalks, visual to be blocked by the landscaping being put in. And it looks to me like, on two sides, you would do that, and on the other two sides, you wouldn't. So in some respects, it looks to me like you have metaphysical tests of putting in landscaping. Would you agree with that?
I'm sorry, what kind of sense?
I'm just asking if you would agree that there's a philosophy about why we would do landscaping, which is blocking visuals. And it seems to me like you have accomplished that with this, in your mind. Is that true?
Yeah, and I guess the landscape architect might be the better. But, I mean, in my experience, in this kind of a facility, if somebody's storing their boat, they don't really care what it looks like in there. It's not, you know, what we, I think, you really, as a city would want to accomplish, is screening it from public view as much as possible. And that, I, looks like, to me, sort of, the goal of this particular landscaping plan, based on the nature of the use. I think if someone's just picking up their RV for a long weekend or something, they really don't, once they get in the gate, they don't care what it looks like. They just want...
So if you were required to put in additional landscaping, all you'd be doing is moving it into the parking area and making it deeper, but no other locations, right?
Yeah, we lose a fifth, a strip fifteen foot wide, the width of the property, to meet the full requirement. So that's the challenge. You can see the site's already very tight. And then for an RV and boat, you have to have a minimum depth. So that's why the loss is nine full spaces. Beyond that, I will say that all the vehicles parked must be two thousand or newer. And if they're older than that, they have to take a full cover, RV custom color, neutral color. And if they have, like, jet skis or the like in a trailer, they have to cover those as well. So the visual impact, in most people's eyes, under those requirements, is actually, I don't know, I find it attractive, but, which certainly wouldn't be very detrimental. You don't see junkers out there. That's the bottom line.
Just to dovetail off of Kessler Snyder's, talking about the philosophical underpinnings of why you do landscaping, and you're talking about the project as one. The landscaping for the current facility is much different than the, seems to be much different than the artistic rendering that we just saw. If we're going to maintain the same philosophical underpinnings for the entire project, it seemed like it would be a good idea to do the same type of landscaping for the entire project. So people that are coming in and out of the subdivision over on the east side would see shrubs and trees as opposed to RVs. If it's an entire, if you're talking about the entire project, you're talking about philosophy, why we do landscaping, philosophy should apply to the entire project if you're speaking of doing it as one project, Phase One, Phase Two. And I'll talk about that a little bit later also, but just my feelings on it.
Oh, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
If it's going to be one big project, all the man landscaping should match. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and then the whole philosophy here that they're speaking of is having it be one project, Phase One, Phase Two.
I got you.
Philosophically, the landscaping is there to, you know, make the view a little bit nicer as opposed to seeing RVs or jet skis, whatever it is.
And maybe Mark could address that, because I don't know all the details. Or John, the architect. Would you mind if he addressed that?
More than welcome.
Actually, we did use the same types of plantings on both sides of the street. There's Eliagnus, puncins, which gets up to the height of the fence. We just actually looked at the plant palette on the first phase and have applied it to the second phase, maybe a little bit tighter, some of the planting.
Okay. So over time, the bushes will obstruct the view on both phases?
Over, yeah, and we've selected, they're not going to be like phoetennias or English laurels that you're constantly hacking and hedging. They're going to be sustainable. They actually are proven plants that work well with roots of trees. We've got zalkovas, which are going to be tall canopy trees, which adds some more of a pedestrian feel and a human scale. And something a little bit different in that yellow flowering tree is the golden rain tree. And both are very compatible, very contrasting, and the shrubs are contrasting in textures and compatible with the growth of the tree, so we don't have plants phased out eventually.
Thank you, John. Anybody else before we excuse the applicant? All right, guys, thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, guys, thank you very much. Appreciate it. We've got a couple of people that have signed up to speak, and we're going to, I'm seeing comments from those who are, want to testify in favor of the project. Ed and Tony, did you want to speak in favor or opposed?
Is it mandatory to be an voter candidate?
Uh, no, it isn't.
Okay.
So just come on up and say your piece, okay? Thank you.
Thanks. I'm Tanya Venus, and my mailing address is P.O. Box 1018 in Ashland. And my husband, Ed, and I own the property at 301 Grove Road, which is the immediate neighbor to the proposed development, which is currently a vacant lot. So I'll just, it sounds like if the plan goes forward, that there will not be covered storage. So I won't address the coverage issue. But we already addressed that in our letter, which I think you have in your packet. So I'll just talk briefly about the landscaping. And I think it's important to remember that our property and our tenants, and also the neighbors in the residential district across the street, are also part of the neighborhood. This isn't just a parking lot for trucks or, or mobile homes. So the aesthetics are really important for everyone. And I think because that's the case, it's important that, that the landscaping properly screen, entirely screen if possible, the storage of RVs and boats. Because I think most people would agree that it's not the most pleasant thing to drive by every day and, and look at in your neighborhood. So a wall would be great. If that's not going to happen, then the minimum required landscaping would be ideal. I've been assured by the applicant that the quality of the vehicles being stored in the lot will improve, because there are some junkers there now. But the applicants are personal friends, and I think they're very trustworthy, and I trust that they will follow through with that. So I, I'd like to say that I, I would like to see them develop the, the land, but beautifully. So that we can all live with it and enjoy it for years to come. Because whatever happens will be here with us for a long time. So thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Ed, do you want to speak also?
Ed Bemus, Post Office Box 1018, Ashland. So, not to be redundant with some of the presentation or some of the previous hearing at the Planning Commission, we're, I think Tanya and I, we're not opposed to the project, but if there's going to be an RV parked there, that keeping it covered is quite important. And I think that's, my point is, we're really looking at a conditional use permit. So there, it's not just a slam dunk, you know, this is how it's going to be. So I think the public testimony is important to hear to confirm that point. So the conditional use permit, I think there were some setback issues that kind of concerned me that I didn't hear about. But I would like to point out two things. One, regarding the landscaping, it looks like a nice plan. But the pictures that I saw, and what I think I'm seeing in the existing structure that they have, is during the wintertime, those trees don't have leaves. And most RV parks and storage facilities, they're blaring the vehicles out there. And I think in the drawing, it looks great, but in reality, I have some concerns, like, you know, January, what's this going to look like? So the landscaping, I applaud them for doing what they're doing. I just think that it needs to be directed to full year coverage, not just part of the year. And the other issue that I had there was the setbacks. It seems like there was some encroachment on the setback as part of the conditional use permit. And I, I think to help meet that landscape requirement, they could pull it back into the original parameters of the project. Now, the next point that I have is I keep hearing reference to the 2004 approval, but we don't know what that plan looks like. We don't have the approval. It's changed hands, it's across the street, this particular project. And so it's like, this project is not that project. When this project got submitted to the Planning Commission, it had roofs, it had what we were hoping for, some articulation in the building to be a nice addition to the neighborhood. And what I thought I was going to hear tonight, or today, was that we were going to enhance that. But instead, it went clear the other way. It's off the table. So the reservation that I have is somehow, I really don't want to look at that in that sense. Now, it's not just as you drive by the street, as you come down Grove Road from the stop sign, the road cascades down. And when it does, when you're up at the top, you see across that whole area. So even if you have trees along there, you're still going to see all the RVs. Now, I'm not against RVs. We have, we have one. We've had a number of them in the past. But I think if we're going to allow a project in a neighborhood like this, there ought to be some parameters. So I'm concerned about that. So originally, it was proposed, my point being, originally it was proposed with the covering. And then we heard that maybe it was going to be articulated in such a way that it would have gables, much larger slope, it would be cut up, and a nice roof. So we're not really sure what the plan is. Right now, I'm hearing that it's just, there's nothing there except landscaping and an RV parking lot. That's kind of what I'm hearing. So, like I said, I'm not opposed to, to the development. I encourage the development. But I just want to protect our interest as a neighbor and be compatible with everyone else there. And of course, if, you know, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We've been there probably fifteen years or so. And when I think of the development, a lot of things have changed in the last fifteen years from, if there were a prior approval. Now we have the freeway there, the, the whole scope of that neighborhood is changing. And so I think we need to look at that.
We're up to five minutes. We appreciate your testimony, but you got to wrap it up for us, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir.
I think that's probably enough. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, good job. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak in favor or against the proposal? Okay. The applicant now. It's time for a rebuttal, if you choose to do so.
And Ed and Tony Bemus, I've known them a long time, and they're, they're great folks, and it's, you know, nothing personal about this. Everybody's got their own sort of vision, and they're neighboring property owners. And, you know, everybody kind of wants something, whatever goes in next door to them, to be as aesthetically pleasing as possible. They own, of course, the building at the bottom of the screen, it backs up against the site, so they are the adjacent property, the only adjacent property owner, really. They did mention the neighbors across, and I think if you go back to the site plan, there is a residential neighborhood. Now, that is sort of, that is, that's what I call a sequestered neighborhood, in the sense that, I would imagine. I don't know how far back the, the city plan on that goes. But there's a, like a big stone wall that separates that neighborhood. And that's why you don't really see any, any neighbors here tonight. There is that neighborhood served to the right of your screen, and there's a big concrete wall and a, quite a wide separation. And, you know, there aren't any neighbors here complaining, so we, we haven't had any, any pushback from that neighborhood at all. With regard to the, you know, and again, it's character of the neighborhood. If you, I think if you look at that area, you'll see that uncovered RV boat parking is not out of character with the surrounding uses. Except for the walled-off neighborhood way, way far over the right of the screen. But anybody who bought there, you know, didn't mind being close to Home Depot and, and a truck stop and Palm Harbor mobile homes and all that. So I assume that they expected that. There was a comment that we don't know what the site plan was in 2004. That's it, right there in front of you. It was Safe Harbor Self-Storage and Wine Cellar. And so that, that's the site plan that was approved. And you can see that, on the left of your screen, across Free Road, that's virtually identical proposal with the landscaping in the same place as is being proposed here. It's virtually identical to that 2004 approved site plan. The configuration of the storage on the right on Parcel One is, is a little different, but the open space is, is similar with all the, everything meeting the requirements. The most of it was stacked up there. And... The other thing is there was a discussion of the trees are not going to have leaves in the winter. I, I think the reason behind this, and John Galbert can correct me if I'm wrong, but those are the Carolina laurels, I mean, those are not deciduous. Those are going to be big, you know, very thick shrubs that get tall, and it will totally block it. The street trees themselves, which are in front of that, they are deciduous. But when everything's mature, it'll, those big shrubs will form a, a big hedge. My understanding is that correct, John?
How, how tall will they get, John?
What will be the height of the fence? We also do street trees, which are, street trees that are low, those are deciduous.
Right, thanks.
Yeah, I, I think they have to do deciduous to meet the street tree requirements on there. And anyway, I think under these unique circumstances, again, it's fair and equitable to have the flexibility to say that these, the overabundance of, of open space and landscaping on the other parcel should, in this, in this unique case, be construed to, to just give a little extra to allow this particular southern parcel to meet the requirements.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
You may.
Hi, I just wanted to say that as...
Well, just, just take your name for the record.
I'm sorry, Kathleen Kellenbeck.
Sure.
I just wanted to say that as, as one of the people who has the privilege of working in a leasing office and also living in that neighborhood right there, it's been really fun and, and heartwarming for neighbors who walk around the neighborhood, stopping in to say how much they're enjoying the appearance. And that they're heartened that it came out so nicely when they didn't know really what to expect. And so that's, that was just, and having the neighborhood be really appealing is important to us. It's our neighborhood. So.
All right, thank you very much. Well, let's hit for the public testimony. And I've got some questions also for staff, but at this point in the hearing, we're going to stop receiving testimony from the public. It's much like a jury being sequestered into a room down the hallway with a guard out front, and you just can't pop your head in and, and add something. So we're going to stop with the public comments at this point. We appreciate everyone commenting. And Evan, I do have some questions for you, maybe Councillor does also, before we enter our deliberations. Before I go, anybody have any questions for staff at this point? Stuart?
It comes back to that definition of site. So do these two parcels meet that definition of one site?
I would have to say no.
Put your mic, put your mic towards you. There you go.
So Evan McKenzie, Planning Director. I would have to say no, only because they were not part of the same development proposal. Had we received an application for them that was a single application, like was done in 2004, I, I would say yes. But that doesn't necessarily mean that you cannot rule in the applicant's favor. But I, they are, they are, they are two different sites as far as our development code is concerned.
Evan, going back to the approval in 2004, the owner of the land has changed, the owner of the proposal has changed. Would that proposal back in 2004 that was approved, given the dynamics that we know about, still apply today?
Unfortunately, I cannot say. I wish I could. So a, a word that is, is used often in other states, less so in Oregon, is entitlement. And so when you get an approval of a land use action, you have an entitlement that generally runs with the land, not the applicant. However, most entitlements have an expiration date. If you do not initiate the approval, if you do not take steps to actually do it or construct it or whatever, typically within two years, you, you, you are considered, you, you sat on your rights, you did not take advantage, and you lose that. Because we have nothing beyond a site plan, we don't know if there was an, an expiration date on that approval. We don't know when it was. We don't know what conditions of approval were attached to it. And so simply relying on that site plan from the 2004 application, I would, I would be extremely hesitant to do that. Now, if you want to rely on it for historical something, that's, that's fine. I would...
Site applications usually expire two years, three, would they go beyond five years or ten years?
It's uncommon. Sometimes they do. Most codes have expiration dates for all type, or, or a time limit for all types of applications directly in the code. We did not do that until we did a code amendment last year. And so it would not have been uncommon to see a condition of approval with an expiration date, essentially, prior to that. But I can't say for certain that every applicant, or every approval would have had a specific condition with a time limit.
Can we be relatively assured that would never go past ten years?
I'm fairly confident, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Because, and there is a reason for that, because codes change, not just the direct code itself, but all of the other implementing standards, your landscaping requirement, your stormwater requirements. We don't want an approval sitting out there and then some other standard changes that we have no control over, and then somebody can build contrary to whatever that thing is.
Thank you. That's all my question. Any other questions for staff before we enter deliberations?
I'll just run it through a couple of scenarios so we can get an idea of how, how this would work. If someone came to you with the same amount of square footage as these two separate pieces were, but they were all in one contiguous piece, and they were going to do the whole thing at once, you'd only care that twenty percent was met for landscaping. Doesn't matter where it is, it would just be twenty percent.
If it's a, what, what we would like to call now a development, a consolidated development site, where you, I mean, you could have four or five parcels. I don't, I don't care, the code doesn't care. If they're all contiguous, we would look at that as one project. But only if you come in and they are all part of the same application. If it is a separate application, you might be able to count something already done as the applicant is requesting now, but it would really have to be on a, very clearly the same site. And I, I'm going to go a little further into this. The reason we're in the position we are now is because we do allow, as mentioned before, parking to be done off the specific site in question. And so the thought was, well, if we can do it with parking, can we do it with landscaping? We'll see if the Planning Commission thinks that's okay. And so I am, from a staff position, I am not opposed to it, but I am also not able to grant it unless the Planning Commission or you do.
To extend that beyond, if we had the same situation, but they drew an arbitrary line down, financial reasons, we're doing this part, do this later, landscaping is still twenty percent, as you said, that's okay. Now, the only thing we have here is we have an artificial barrier called a road between the two pieces. If they come in with both of those at one time, you would still say that would, the twenty percent somehow spread over the two would be acceptable.
I, if it was all one application all at the same time, I would very, yes, I would accept that.
And that's based on legalities and practicalities.
Well, and I think we would have less of a question of whether it was a single project with such an application. I, I think you could make a very, you know, I think multiple people could come to the same conclusion. same conclusion.
Good, thank you. There's nothing in the code, there's no provision saying currently that you can bank landscaping like you can bank parking spaces.
That's correct.
Right, okay. Anybody else? All right, we're going to enter our deliberations. Thank you very much.
Go.
Bathroom right first, okay? Well, I guess we need about five minutes for a quick break. So we're going to come back and we'll resume, really in just five minutes, okay? So at the five after eight, we're going to resume, okay? All right.
You know, over at the RV car, they have this little thing that's on the desk and you can put on speakerphone and you can hear perfectly, and people out there can also hear really well. We just need one of those speaker boxes here for what we... Yeah. Yeah, we need one. I have probably an executive session, you don't know what's going on in the other room. So people, if you could have on speakerphone with a hundred people listening, that's supposed to be a closed session, right? That's not an executive session, I'm doing it by phone. See how boss act? They're quite relaxed, you know, I mean, like going more than 20 minutes or long, had to go five rounds, but it's the hell. Facebook going on.
Yes, you have to really push on it and then it doesn't. Like I thought, I tried twice and I thought it was done and then she just went. So I... Oh. Oh, I thought I said it. You really, really have to push to try to get it to, as I'm, if they're, I'm sure they would have a difficult time getting it. Just...
God, not if Sydney's around, don't do it.
All right, we're going to start. Okay, so we're going to continue the meeting and go into our deliberations. Who wants to kick it off? And I'll speak at once. I'll get a shot at it.
All right.
I don't have a problem with it. I know, but here's the issue, it's variance. And every time we do a variance, invariably it comes back biased later. It happened on Church Street, it happened out here on highways, and I'm sick of variances coming back biased later on. I think we solved the problem or helped a person with an issue or whatever it was, and we wind up getting held accountable for something that we shouldn't have changed. And last time I was told, we need to change the ordinance, change the rules, instead of going outside the rules of variances. So, Mr. Kellenbeck, I support your expansion, I do, I really do, and I think that 3% is nitpicking, you know? But the last two times we've done big controversial variances, inevitably we're back in here a couple of months later with somebody who's raised something and we're doing it all over again and, and the end there is a waste of a lot of time. So that's my thought. But for the record, I support you, I do support it, I'm just not sure how. I would like to see us change the ordinance. If we're going to, let's make it so that it's, it's more, that it's better for business. I mean, that's nice space, but that's a lot. I mean, I know what you charge for space. That's a lot of money, you know? And so I understand from a business man's point of view what you're, what you're talking about, I totally get it. But I also understand that we have laws and we have rules, we have, we have a planning commission for a reason. And I, I don't necessarily agree with what they're saying in this instance, but, but I know where it comes from and, and kind of fixes what happens.
Thank you very much. Counsel Snyder.
I see this from a lot of different angles. One of them is black letter of the law. And obviously, since we can't have documented proof that we had one composite decision being, being made in 2004, and it might not even been still in effect because 10 years is what it is. So black letter of the law, 20% each side. Is it practical? When I look at the diagram, the one we have here, there's another one where you have the two pieces together, but the same diagram. And I was trying to visualize the depth between the sidewalk and the interior landscaping. And it looked to me like the depth was about the same on both properties, or at least the one you have now and the one you proposed. Seems to be about the same depth. If we do a black letter of the law, I think you have to move what you're seeing here inward. That's why you're losing theoretically a certain amount of spaces. I think you'd have to totally redesign this thing in order to make that work because you'd have to bring everything in. So I think there's a practicality side to this also. And one of them is that you've granted us more than 20% overall for the whole thing, thank you very much, even though you did it more on the other side. But I think the way you've laid the, your current one out against this one, it looks to me to be sensibly the same in terms of how much land you're taking up to actually do landscaping on. I'm not sure that we're issuing a variance on this thing so much as we're trying to wrestle with the vagaries of having but not really having a composite approval for the, both sites at the same time, doing them in separate pieces. But I don't think it makes a whole lot of sense to imply too much additional space for landscaping on this smaller parcel just to meet a black letter of the law requirement. Because it just, it doesn't make economic sense to me to do that. And I think you've accomplished that argument. The only question is whether it's the right kind of thing to do here. And I'm still kind of mulling over in my mind whether we have to go black letter of the law, 20% each piece, or whether we actually have, in an abstract sense, in a philosophical sense, have one project, it just happens to be separated by a road in the middle. And how do we accomplish that? To look, make it look the same, feel the same, and accomplish the same landscaping requirements on both? I'm still a little out on that particular aspect yet. So for the moment, I'd like to hear some more arguments from people.
Okay.
I'm kind of in the same place with Jim. You know, I see this as not so much as a variance from, you know, actually the law, but more of just two separate applications that have put in a, a single time would have gone right through the planning. And that's kind of where I land with this. You know, I, I appreciate what Terry is saying about taking variances from the law and everything else, but this, I think this is a different case from those. Than those, it was us trying to plan for variance from our own laws, which doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to me, is that the body was making the law, right? Whereas this one, we have a, a business who's applying for a second phase basically of an overall project that if had all been applied for in the first place together, would have gone, would have been approved at the planning desk.
Also, with the description of site, a group of adjacent parcels or lots being the site of that same business, I know what Terry is speaking about on the, on the other variance. And in looking at this, the parking, like Evan has said, the parking in a back site, if that could sit under that same rule with the landscaping, in essence, there's more landscaping than we asked for and so I... That's him.
Anybody else? I just want to say I'm, I would like to support our planning commission with their decisions and feel that they are empowered to do what they think is right. That's number one. That's all I'm going to say. I, I really, I'll leave it to you guys to deliberate some more and come to your own decision.
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to thank the planning commission who's not here.
Yeah.
They, they took the approach of black letter of the law. They did not take it upon themselves to grant different things for different reasons. I think with the evidence that they had in hand, they did the right thing for what they do. That bumped it up to us to kind of decide whether we actually want to follow black letter of the law or whether we want to, and treat it in a more abstract way. So I think that's where I'm at with the planning commission, I agree with you, they did their job, they did it properly. And they couldn't come up with another conclusion, I don't think, based on the law that they had to read with and what they had to work with, the documents missing, the 2004 one, if it even was variable. So I think we're back to this point where we have to decide whether or not we wish to, to bend the law to make it look and feel proper.
I think another point too with the planning commission is they were looking at both the architecture aspect and, and the, you know, the landscaping. And since the architecture aspect's been dropped, you know, I think that was probably a major driving decision for most of those folks, which they liked to not approve it. And I don't think that under this, with that, with architecture thing in mind, that if this was one overarching project, that it would have been approved as, as it was. Whereas with the architecture dropped, landscaping probably would have been approved as one single project.
I know that we keep equal, we want equal treatment for everyone, for every business that came through. So if this scenario came, this exact scenario came through again where an adjacent parcel comes up afterwards, would we still be okay giving this a caveat in doing that, which I still feel like that would probably be okay in a distinct set of circumstances.
There is very two distinct criteria that was put forth by the planning commission as at the meeting. And one was the, the roof and the other one was the landscaping. There's two very separate, distinct issues that they ruled upon. Anybody else?
I go back to that, the lighting on page three again in the appeal that said that the planning commission with a lighting plan may, may reconsider or help that finding as well, so just a point of interest.
I hear you, but I think the crux of the biscuit is not so much the lighting, which will come, there's a conditional use permit, they have to do lighting, else they're not going to be able to open that lot, so that, that will come.
Okay.
The, the criteria is still, to me, revolves around landscaping being 17% versus 20% and two separate site plans going for approval two separate times. So that's the crux of the biscuit, to me. So I know Terry used the word variance, but it's not technically a variance.
It is.
Yeah, what, what...
It's where we're at.
Yep.
So we didn't have a choice, we're here.
And, and we...
So it is a variance.
And we are...
A variance is when we got killed on the single lane road. It's also, remember how full the gallery was when we did Church Street?
Yep.
Nikki was all wound up and I don't waver, right? And it's just like, oh my gosh, I feel like we're making the same mistake for the third time in a row. I've been in hot water too many times for making that mistake and I don't want to jump back in the pan, that's all I'm saying.
I understand. And, you know, we're going to bury from the letter of the, of the law if, if it were to be approved.
Right.
That's what you mean, gotcha?
Yeah.
Yeah. And it would, that 3% landscaping would be a financial burden on the applicant, but that's part of the, you know, that's part of our decision-making process. Do we have more deliberations or shall we go to a motion and a, and a vote?
Some part has been dropped, we've been asked to address the voting on that aspect and we're just only into landscaping.
To me, it's just the landscaping because the roofing issue is off the table. We're not going to have covered parting, but any, any uncovered storage has to be done through a conditional use permit, it's just the way it is. And we're tonight either, we're here to either approve or not approve the conditional use permit.
Did the planning commission have an opinion on if the roof was there? I know they had problems with the way it was set. Did, did the planning commission have an opinion on if it was uncovered or not?
Well, they had a big opinion on the, the roof. They used the word, I think, articulation. It wasn't, it was just one big flat roof and they had a problem with, with that aspect of, of the plan. But that's off the table. It's going to be uncovered parting, so that's what I didn't really...
So the planning commission does not have a problem with the uncovered parking?
They didn't mention when they do or don't because the applicant at that point in time had the roof as part of the project.
So would that need to go back to planning commission as that plan?
Well, we can act upon it. It doesn't have to go back to the planning commission.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jim always has something smart to say.
Well, if there's no more deliberation, then we're going to need a motion by somebody.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Absolutely.
Simply as a point of order.
Thank you.
My concern is less about whether or not you wish to approve or deny it, but simply that your findings are reflected in the motion. And, you know, that the basis of your motion is documented so that regardless of the outcome, if there were to be a further appeal, we would know what's being appealed. I'm not saying there will be. But, so I think that the crux of the issue is the landscaping and if, if anybody is going to make a motion, you need to make your motion with some facts to back up that motion and then a recommendation to approve or deny or affirm or reverse essentially. That is the only thing, is strictly for the record, make sure that the reason you're making your motion is documented so that everybody knows what result, what we relied on when we made the decision.
No, so those motions on page... No, so those motions on page, page eight, page nine?
And you are, you do not have to follow those. We typically do that with the planning commission, just because sometimes they come to the end and they're wondering what to do. You can follow that, you are certainly not bound by that language, but it's there to hopefully help you make a motion with a finding of something.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Evan.
So do we consider it one or two?
You're asking if you consider it one or two? I'm sorry.
It's just a point of order, I'm not going to offer any testimony.
Yes. Go, go to our planning commissioner and talk to him for a second, then I'll come up. I'm not going to allow any more testimony from the applicant or their team, but Rowan had a question regarding?
So what's our position on if it's one parcel or two?
What's our position on if it's one parcel or? Well, it's not somebody, it's definitely two parcels. I think the question is, is it two separate applications? And if it's two separate applications, that has a bearing, if you're looking at the letter of the law. If it's two separate application involving the, the rule of law, write the letter, then you, you need 20% landscaping in the, in quote-unquote phase two.
Regardless of parcel size?
Regardless of parcel size, it, it doesn't matter. It's, if the parcel size were 10 times the amount, you said to have 20% landscaping. If it were even smaller, it's still 20% landscaping. So it's a separate application and a separate parcel, right? So I think here's the answer. Yes?
Last time, I hope. So I have been informed by the applicant's attorney that should the commission wish to, or council wish to basically have a, a door number three, that approval, basically, with conditions that all requirements are met, basically landscaping would be preferred to an outright denial. Does that make sense?
Could you repeat that?
So the, the applicant, if, if there is a motion to affirm the decision of the planning commission, that rather than simply deny the application, the applicant would prefer a motion to allow it to be approved, to reverse the, the planning commission decision with conditions of approval, or a specific condition of approval that the 20% landscape requirement be met on this subject parcel, mostly because the way our code works, he would not be allowed to resubmit a modified application for a certain period of time. And so this, this is another option for the council. I don't know if our city attorney would, would want to add any further information for your consideration.
Before he does that, let's just make sure that we're all, we do understand what he's saying. We could approve a conditional use permit and say, hey, you can get approved, but you got to, you got to meet the 20% landscaping parameters that are dictated by the code. We, we could do that. You could also say, no, we're not going to approve it. We could say?
Well, how does that solve anything?
No, no, well, Terry, it, it, it does make the applicant go by the letter of the law that says, hey, 20% of that area must be landscaped.
So?
That's, that, that's, that's what that solves. I just want to make sure that we're, I want to button up this one issue to make sure we're completely clear on our different options before we have a motion.
If I may?
Okay.
That, the, because this is un, outdoor storage, not in a fully enclosed building, it requires a conditional use approval regardless of whether or not it meets all of the other criteria. And so that's why this went before the planning commission. Even if all criteria were met, it would still have gone before the planning commission as a conditional use because it was not enclosed. And so we are in this process. Does that help?
And, and we do a conditional use because they don't meet what is stipulated in the approval, then they can get their permit or their project disapproved.
Right.
I'm not sure exactly if I'm putting that the right way. That's why you have a conditional use permit, you must over time meet the requirements. If you don't, we're going to pull our approval.
Exactly. And, and this is a little different than something that would normally come before the city council, where you could reconvene at your next meeting and simply bring it up again and do something different. We, we don't have that luxury with a land use action. And so it, for the applicant's case, in this particular instance, the applicant would prefer a decision that would at least allow him to proceed according to all code requirements, rather than having to wait six months to resubmit.
We're clear?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, so back to our deliberations and a possible motion. I'll open up the council to do their thing.
Was Doug, did you want to add something?
No. I mean, well explained.
I just want to make the move, guys.
How do you view the motion? Right proposal, and that we review that and discuss it, rather than trying to do it from memory. Do you have a draft for us to look at?
Do you mean draft of a motion? Well, the motion would be fairly straightforward. I, I, I do, I propose that we approve the conditional use permit with the following stipulation, that the applicant must meet the 20% landscaping rule. That's what, that's a possible motion that somebody could make, and I'm just throwing it out as a possibility based on what our planner just said. But since I can't make a motion?
I move to reverse the decision of the planning commission and approve the conditional use permit quest with condition that all code requirements are met.
I second.
Any more deliberations?
I've never done anything like this and had it turn out good.
It's, 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 it's still covering it.
But, 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 we're meeting all the requirements.
Yeah, we're not changing anything.
Trust me.
But, Terry, well, we're not changing anything.
Trust me.
Well, we're not changing a thing.
Yeah, they're going to take, they're going to lose their nine spots.
That proposal meets all the requirements, and we're not going to vary from the land use code. Any more deliberations? Okay, let's call it a question.
Was there a second?
I second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Council for Leon?
Yes.
Council Warren?
Yes.
Council Spada?
Yes.
Council Parker?
Yes.
Council Baker?
No.
Okay, the motion passes, and thank you very much, everyone. I hope that helps in some way.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right.
We hope for the very good decision of law.
So we keep everybody happy.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
See you, Chris.
See ya.
Okay, guys. Next up is staff reports, and I know Evan wanted to talk a little bit about updated UGB amendment process, but first up with the city attorney.
I have nothing to add.
Then Aaron.
I just wanted to thank everyone for the evaluation earlier today.
Good.
I enjoy very much working here at the city of Phoenix, and I hope to be here for a long time. Also, I wanted to say that Evan did include a detailed agenda report. I don't know if you need him to go through all of it. I think he's just outside talking to some people about, you know, the deal process, but we can call him in if you need him.
Yeah, well, we got to keep these movements, so we do need him to, he wants to give a little brief update.
Wasn't sure if you wanted him to give an update or if the information in the packet, you know, generated any questions or if it was pretty straightforward.
I've got a couple of things for him. It's a really important issue to me, so I'd like to take care of them. Mr. Gerges, an update on the UGB amendment process? Got to keep that thing moving. Evan?
Okay, what now?
So, we're up to a new report and an agenda for the update on UGB amendment process.
So, um, well, there's not much, there's not a whole lot additional to offer beyond what's in there, although I did want to add that one of the things that we will need to do is update the housing element to correspond to the new growth projections from PSU, and as some of you know, they were ratcheted down by about 50%. And that obviously ratchets down our land need significantly. I've started going over all the tables in the housing element, trying to find out exactly what we need to update. We will still have a land need, and it looks to be in excess of at least PH10 for residential. So we are probably still going to be able to justify PH10, thankfully, so that's, that's good. PH5 will probably come later, and as much as I would love to bring it in sooner, we're not going to have infrastructure up there until PH10 gets built, so really, I don't see the downside.
Well, we had a meeting between the DLCD, myself, you, Matt Brinkley, Thousand Friends of Oregon, we talked about PH5 and how frustrating the whole process was. Now, we go through a, a process with the regional problem solver, which takes us 10, 11 years, just ridiculous, and we allocate PH5 to Phoenix as a regional problem-solving piece of land that can accommodate housing and employment land.
Yep.
And then we have to go to the state and beg them to allow us to put one acre of housing in an acre of employment land. It's the most frustrating process by, I'm going to call them knuckleheads up, up in Salem. Sorry, guys, but a lot of knuckleheads up there thwart our process to the point where we want to grow, but they look at our growth, and you're not growing, so you can't grow some more. But we can't grow because you have no land. It's idiotic what would happen up there. So I, I still want to fight for land on PH5 to be used for a regional problem-solving process for housing, which we desperately need, and for employment land, which was the thrust of the regional problem-solving process.
And we should be able to make a pretty good argument to the state for the, I'll just call it the employment portion of PH5. And so, which is about two-thirds of it.
Yeah.
Both sides of North Phoenix wrote, and the reason we'll be able to do a big land grab in PH5 is because our justification for the, the employment lands is not the same as it is for residential. We don't have to use the same metrics. We can rely on the regional need, which is basically everywhere from Eugene to Redding, whereas for residential, we can only look within our boundaries. And, you know, a lot of, a lot of people on the public side and perhaps even some elected officials, I think it would be very easy for you to think that all of us planners think that Oregon's land use system is just the greatest thing since sliced bread, and plenty of us express problems and reservations with the way it works as well, so unfortunately, we have to still deal with it.
And Phoenix needs the growth. I mean, every single year, our expenses, the city, go up four, five percent per year with union contracts and with inflation. Our cost goes up every single year, and it compounds. Our revenue is not going up. We, we can't, you know, Phoenix, talent has quite a few new, new homes and new growth, Medford, of course, Central Point does, but Phoenix is sitting here constrained, can't build, therefore our revenue is not going up to match our expenses. It's killing us.
Yep.
So I'm not sure what we can do about it, but another meeting between Thousand Friends and DLCD, get Josh down here and Greg, and I, I'm not sure what, what to do, but I think we got to push it.
I did meet with Josh and Greg on Wednesday of last week, so after your packets had been put together. I wouldn't say that it's clear sailing, because that would be insane. You know, if there's anything I've learned, it's to under-promise and over-deliver, which, you know, would make me want to say, give us two years and we'll have it done in one. But it's been two years, and we're not that much closer. I do think that it is reasonable to get our, all of our remaining comprehensive out, plan elements done this year, and start the process to bring in at least all of PH10, possibly, and portions of PH5. I, I do not see us going after the residential portion of PH5 in the next two years. But that doesn't mean we won't get it. I think if we see build out of PH10, and I think we will see it, and I think we'll see it fairly quickly, that will also greatly increase the, basically the number of units per year, because right now, we, we've got nothing to build on. When we have 20 or 30 acres to work with, and we might see 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 permits in one year, that's going to make the state see that we can actually support that level of growth and make, hopefully make them more amenable to giving us PH5.
Ever, if I may, but is it three parcels that make up PH10?
I think so.
It's just three? And have those three parcels expressed an interest?
Yes.
They have?
I don't know if all of them are willing, I doubt, I knew, I know for sure one is.
One of three, it's still not enough, okay?
I think two, maybe, I'm not sure on the third.
All right.
So, the, the end is near, but we're not there yet, we will get there. We've had some discussions at the staff level about the time it has taken to get some of this work done. Some of it is certainly on me, and so that's, that's my doing or my not doing, would be the better way to put it. Also, I think we need to probably have a full court press on our consultant, because honestly, I'll say this publicly, I'm really not sure who is in charge of him with the contract that we have. So I, I just don't know.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure the minutes reflect my desire to move this process along as possible. If the notes, the minutes could encapsulate what I'm trying to say, so it's on the record, I really appreciate it, okay? Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much.
Now, I, I will add that on these remaining items that we have, we will depend on you for input, and because these are all legislative items, we can talk at any time, we can talk outside the hearings. If you've got questions, concerns, things that you'd like to see as possible things in there for goals or priorities or whatever, let us know, so that at the very least, we can make a note of it and say, somebody would like to discuss this as we go through this process. Because I don't live here, it's not my town, it's your town. I don't know what you want, and we need to know what you want, so that your plans will reflect it, and hopefully we will get what you're after.
If you can take initial shot at it and then come back to us for input, that'd be great. Anybody else? Have anything else? Okay, great, thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, let's go around the horn, okay? Counsel comments?
I think?
Mr. Baseball, I mean, Corv?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Vacation, I mean. Any comments?
I wish to report that the crypt of the burial of cemetery number one in New Orleans is still intact in spite of all hurricanes, and the Nicolas Cage's pyramid that he built for himself to encrypt his body still has lipstick all over it.
And if you want to have, if you love roller coasters, then you'll want to ride with a New York cabbie from JFK to Midtown in the middle of rush hour traffic. That is fun.
Have you ever done that? That's all I got.
All right, Mr. Warren? I just want to show everybody the first draft of Phoenix Voice, this is the new community newsletter that the group that I was tasked to assist came up with. I gave it all out, I just handed it out at the last, or Chamberlain handed it out, I should say, at the last, at the budget meeting, in case we had to have discussion about costs of it coming up. If you took the time to look at it, it's actually going to come under budget from what we appropriate in the budget. So as long as everybody's okay with us moving forward with this, we'll take the next steps and reconvene the committee, the committee, and come up with requirements for what it takes to submit something, and how that whole process will look.
Can you notice us when the meetings are, so we may partake if we would like so.
Sure.
Okay, great, thank you.
If I may, have we fixed the distribution system yet? I don't have the mailing system talking about, because that's still being worked.
It would basically go out the same way that the current newsletter does.
Because we have some citizens who don't have the same postal, so we wanna make sure we get it to them.
We're not.
It's only a couple of roads off Camp Baker, I think Skylar and Al's out there.
I don't have anything other than wondering after the budget meeting and civic center's costs. I wonder if we should at some point at a city council meeting, look at what works for the civic center and what doesn't, if it's being utilized in the daytime when we have Braylon or Kimberlin here or whoever, if that's effective, like we, I know we looked at that a few months ago, but is it still effective and what works for it in light of the civic center having some budget issues too? Maybe, maybe we can brainstorm on some more effective ideas.
So you'd like to agendaize a part of meeting to talk about the issue?
Yeah, maybe, just to revisit if it's working or not.
And I'm happy to send an email out to the council to give kind of an update on personnel or staffing and thoughts going forward relative to the civic center.
Okay.
Might generate additional questions and it might be something that we wanna agendize, but it may also answer most of the questions that come out.
Yeah, I knew just from listening before, maybe that staffing in the daytime was good, but didn't know if that, if people utilized that or not.
Any cameras?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Well, you know, I took a walk out to visit some of our campers just outside of town. And I ran to a couple of campsites and at one of the campsites out there, it was soon gonna be dry, tinder, full of fuel, all of these things. Firestarter for our audience, this is out the campsites, right? Pretty soon will be fire season come August, September. Dry as a bone out there. And people are out there using sterno and making fires. I sent a suggestion to Erin, by the way, next meeting I'm going to agendize and ask for money to mitigate the fire debris and the dangers out there. But I just have a letter. I wanted to just pass it on to council, keep you guys in the loop and see if you have any objections next time we put it on the agenda for approval. But, you know, I just wanted to send a letter out. Erin and I did meet with the railroad regarding two parcels of land, one on Culver Road and one the helicopter pad parcel. And in their eyes, the helicopter pad parcel is more of a urgent issue because of the dangers that it poses or poses to people that live nearby. But I get this letter and I'd like to send this to the railroad. It just states that as fire season approaches, our level of concern has risen to the point where we need immediate cooperation with the Central Oregon and Pacific Railroad. And I'm gonna go on with my four points. It says, large amounts of fire fuel has built up on your right of way that borders housing for our disabled residents. This fuel is only seventeen feet from buildings at Rose Court Apartments at 933 North Rose Street in Phoenix, Oregon. I went out there and measured it. It's seventeen feet away. Rose Court houses, people that are severely disabled, blind and have mental challenges, these residents would have difficulty evacuating their homes if a fire moved from your right of way to Rose Court Apartments. Our fire chief has recommended a fire break that includes your right of way and fire fuel on your right of way. We need your approval to hire a contractor that can remove the fire fuel within your right of way. We will pay for the cost of removing the fire fuel. Your contribution toward the cost would be appreciated, but if we must pay a hundred percent of the cost, we will do so. All we are at, all we are needing is your approval to perform the mitigation within your right of way. Please respond so we can resolve this problem before we enter fire season. Protecting the property and lives of our citizens is of our highest concern and your cooperation is strongly requested. For one, I'm sending out to the railroad. And then next time, we're gonna do an ask for some money to mitigate the problem. May encourage everyone to walk out there and check it out. I've never seen a thicker level of grass for instance of all the rains this year, but come, come August, September, it's gonna be, fires can be out there and we've got campers out there with firestarter, right? That's my concern.
A couple of questions here. So you have not sent this out yet?
I have not. I wanted to get the council to move.
Great. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I'd say we don't send it until we talk about seriously how we're gonna fund this, if we're gonna fund this. Because I don't believe this was under budget that we just passed. And that's an issue for us, for sure. Second of all, this is a more broad question. I mean, the right of way, does that go through the city of Phoenix? Are you talking about?
No, it's a ton.
Well, a portion of it does. I'm sorry. A portion of the right of way goes through city limits and then a portion of it is over by the helicopter pad. So because we met along Culver Road, which is in the city limits, but I think what the mayor is specifically referring to is the portion that is outside the city limits.
Correct. I'm only referring to the portion that is on the helicopter pad, just in back of.
I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page.
And I'm just wondering, the portion that's within city limits, are they following our codes? I mean, do they have, can we get them with a noxious weeds ordinance?
They do, they do follow the code. They do go in there and they do cut the grass every single year.
Along Culver, right.
As far as funding goes, it would have to come from contingency. It wouldn't, in my mind, has to be done before July first, when next budget starts. We can't wait till after July first to hit this because it's fire season. So it would have to come from, I believe, contingency.
If we're gonna have this conversation, I'd like to see, you know, from JC's perspective, where this money would come from, how much money they have available and what, how would it impact next year's budgets?
And she'll be at the next council meeting.
Okay, but if we decrease our ending fund balance by ten thousand dollars, if we use ten thousand dollars, that's what the effect would be. I'm sure she'll tell you that. But if you like to wait two weeks, we, I have a bit of an objection, but.
Do we have an estimate?
Wait. Do we have an estimate?
No, we don't have an estimate.
We can't do it, sir.
The scope has kind of changed depending on whether or not they're gonna be responsible for their right of way and we're gonna handle what's on the helicopter pad or if we're gonna be handling their right of way and whether that right of way includes the city limits or outside of the city limits. So there's not a clear definition. But if we were to allocate a certain number of funds and we were to define an area that we are gonna, that we're gonna pay for, then we could use those funds for that.
Still don't know what the funds are.
Well, the other piece of it is, the council hasn't decided that they want to spend money, so there hasn't been a lot of activity as far as me figuring out what the cost would be. Because I don't know whether or not I'm talking about, you know, a railroad line, you know, from one end to the other, or if I'm talking about a fifty-foot right of way that they're responsible for anyway, or if I'm talking about a fifty-foot right of way plus the vegetation that's outside of their right of way and on the county property, because that's another piece of the, this discussion. There, there's a right of way, or I should say, there's what we call a fire break of maybe fifty feet. But there's also a discussion as to whether or not we wanna clear brush that's on the county property that's well outside of fifty feet.
I keep talking to you because we're deliberating on a particular issue, right?
Well, yeah. That's one. You got this letter, so you're gonna have to talk about it, but you're gonna have to talk about it at your next meeting. But also, I'll have to do some research on it because you're really talking about going onto someone else's property and improving their land.
Right.
Well, I understand that. I'm not sure that you have authority to go, first, you know, that's, that's an issue. I'm not sure if you haven't even talked with the railroad as to whether or not, I mean, it's not like they don't have the money to do it.
Well, we're asking for authority. I'm gonna go on to, I know that.
I know you're asking for authority, but then you're talking about using your public funds to improve private properties, private property owners. I mean, why would you, I mean, will you do that on my property? Be nice. I mean, I, I mean, I'm not, I don't wanna be facetious, but I mean, that's the issue. I need to make sure that you guys can do that. And, you know, what, yeah, I don't know that you can.
Well, you get some homework to do then.
Yeah. Yeah, and I don't, I mean, I'll do, I'll, I'll see what I can to make sure that you can. I don't, I'm not sure that there's any problem. I just, that's just, I shouldn't would have.
I hope that government isn't so inflexible that they would say, hey, you can't mitigate the fire danger that's posed to these people that live in Rose Court Apartments.
I would agree.
Getting out.
I'd agree. But I mean, again, you're using taxpayers' money on one, you know, who's not even a taxpayer. So I mean, I, I don't wanna get into deliberations for it. I'm sorry. But I just am trying to figure out what that means.
Well, food for thought for next week.
Yeah, sure is.
That's all I have.
Anything else? Do we go to the monitor? All right, let's go into the meeting at eight fifty. Thank you.